If there are questions, I am here to answer you.
Thank you, thank you Felice. Questions? Okay, good, so maybe we can even delay a little bit discussion after the presentation. If the audience has some question, we can even do it later on. In the meanwhile, we can move to the next presentation that will be given by Antonio Padovano. And we are going to talk about the digital twin that will be developed by within the Felice Project, as was mentioned at the beginning by Manolis. One of the, let's say, of the module of the Felice architecture is the digital twin. Antonio, the floor is yours.
Good morning, everyone. Just a few seconds. Can you hear me?
Perfectly.
Okay, so give me one second to share the screen. Okay, can you see the presentation?
Yes, perfectly.
Okay, so good morning again. My name is Antonio Padovano and together with Francesco Longo, we are in the Caltech team, which is also involved in the Felice project. So our role in the project is related to the design and development of digital twin solutions for next generation human robot adaptive assembly lines. So we cover the full life cycle from the analysis of the requirements and the analysis of the goals of this kind of new technological solutions, till the development and validation and testing and implementation in the assembly line of the same solution. In this, let me say, introductory presentation, I just would like to discuss with you some of the interesting results from the state of the art especially, that we carried out over the last months, especially because, of course, the Felice project has started few months ago, so we are right now in the design phase, design, and we started already the development phase in a very preliminary way. But I think that for the discussion, there are very interesting points that can be useful also for some knowledge exchange and maybe for later discussion. Just a few words about who we are. So we are located in the south of Italy, so the main partner, the partner of this Felice project is Caltech. Caltech is a spin-off company of the University of Calabria, which develops solutions integrating different kinds of technologies, including simulation, augmented and virtual and mixed reality, 3D environments, intelligent vocal assistants, several other technological solutions for industry and logistics, or even other domains. There is a strong collaboration with a research laboratory of the Department of Mechanical Energy Management Engineering of the University of Calabria, so-called Modeling and Simulation Centre Laboratory of Enterprise Solutions. And therefore, this highlights the strong research-oriented spirit of the company of Caltech. As you can see, there are several research areas in the ecosystem related to smart manufacturing, from training solutions based on virtual, immersive and interactive platforms, to mobile tools for unenhanced human machine and human robot interaction in production systems, intelligent vocal assistants, as I said, for smart operators in the factory of the future, and digital twins for real-time monitoring, process optimization, smart control and decision-making support. This is just a picture of who we are and some contacts if you want to know more about our activities. Just an introduction on the project and on the work we did over the last few months. So we basically know that human robot collaboration is one of the most fast-growing focus areas for the digital twin literature. Several research works are coming up, especially exploring safety and productivity issues. However, what we noticed from an analysis is that current human robot collaboration setups lack of adaptability, so that both the robot, the human, so the teams, are not able to update strategy quickly when the assembly environment changes. The assembly environment can change for any kind of reason, from external changes to internal changes. So what the perception is that basically the connection with environmental data is still weak in the literature, and also assembly systems require a very strong cognitive ability. So for this reason, also in collaboration with the other teams of the Felice project, we are going to develop a digital twin solution for human robot adaptive assembly lines. So of course, when you, let me say, develop this kind of solution, you have to have in mind clearly, especially what is a digital twin. So if you give a look to the proposal of the project, a digital twin is basically a virtual replica of the assembly assets, in this case, that can be used, used to monitor the physical assembly line and also to, on the other side, to optimize the production workflow, considering always such continuously changing conditions. As I said, could be external changes, maybe some production adjustments, redesign, change in the work orders and so on, but also some internal changes, such as the worker fatigue, machinery faults, worker errors and so on. Why is that? We need to continuously, thanks to the digital twin, simulate scenarios to support informed decisions, so that we can make some corrective decisions and enable a selective use of the robots. So this is the main objective that relates to our involvement in the Felice project. Just let me move to the methods that we have implemented so far. This is a single picture actually, split into columns for a better readability. So we started from an analysis of the requirements of the digital twin, where we basically analyzed the state of the art in the literature, the scientific literature, but also we carried out an extensive analysis of user requirements and use cases. We analyzed non-functional requirements, constraints, standards and international standards and regulations, in order to come up with a list of requirements that the digital twin should address. After that, what is important in our opinion, as second step, is to define the scope of the digital twin. So basically, the scope is the set, the list of items to be twinned. So what is going to be replicated in the digital twin? This is a very critical question, because of course, this makes the design and development phase very time-consuming and expensive. So we need to focus, generally, digital twin developers need to focus exactly on those items that really need to be twinned. This kind of development is very critical, and also some decisions must be taken. For example, are we going to develop and to use some model-based systems or some data-based systems? Of course, the development approach is different and depends basically on the availability of data from the real system. After that, the third question answered in step C is the digital twin data requirements elicitation. So once we have understood which are the main items to be twinned, let me say, are robots, no? Which are the data to be collected and to be exchanged in real time with the real, with the real factory, between the real factory and the digital twin? So of course, in this case, it is extremely important to interact with subject matter experts, for example, those who are expert with the robot, those who are expert with the assembly process and so on. So of course, a list of required data is needed, so that we can basically understand which is the architecture that is underlying the world project and the world digital twin, and therefore guide the development, especially of the communication protocol. It is a very well-known issue in the literature and of scientists, that the communication part between the different systems constituting a digital twin is a critical element that must be discussed, and I think it is very largely explored today, in order to understand which is the best setting for the, or the best technology, the best standard for this kind of tools. Of course, this kind of analysis, discussion in the literature is still at a very infant stage. So the Felice project really aims at covering also this kind of aspects and maybe provide one potential solution for this kind of tools. The last step in this, in this analysis, in this part of the project, is related to the definition of the technical architecture for the digital twin. So once we have collected the requirements from the stakeholders, that we have understood the scope of the digital twin and the data to be exchanged, we are able to draft a digital twin architecture, so which are the main modules of the digital twin and so on. Just may go very quickly through the, through some points in the state of the art and then close this presentation. So as I said, the digital twin literature is one of the most fast-growing focus areas, especially when it is related to the human robot collaboration. However, this is rarely considered from a life cycle approach. So when we deal with this kind of studies, we know that digital twin can support human robot collaboration systems, however, these are traditionally limited to the operational phase, while other phases in the industrial life cycle are not considered. Which other phases? For example, the design phase. The design phase, for example, to achieve a safe and waste-free layout, and therefore carry out some collision tests, ergonomic analysis, reach and placement evaluation, or maybe also the integration phase, when we study the behavior of the physical robot in the virtual space. So on the other side, the operation phase is, let me say, also quite, quite analyzed, maybe the most analyzed. Of course, we are talking always about really a very small, small set of papers in the literature. This is a very recent trend, therefore, there are not so many studies from this point of view, but most of them focus especially on the operation phase, meaning dynamic task allocation, task time estimation, or maybe robot controlling programs and so on. Some other applications are instead cross-domain. For example, the case of virtual commissioning, that is very interesting, because we can commit an order in the, in the digital twin, see what is going on in the digital twin, and then do the same in the real environment, once we have validated exactly a specific strategy in the digital twin. Now, let me say that most focus areas for a model-based engineering approach for digital twin are the, for example, the virtual representation of the shop floor, using not only CAD models, 3D models, but also combining multiple sensors, multiple sensor data. But also another point that is going to be discussed is the semantic representation of data, which is extremely important when we deal with cooperative, cooperative systems, and also the dynamic update of the digital twin based on these real-time sensors, real-time data. These are three critical points that are being discussed, and that still actually did not find a unique solution, but several, several solutions are under, under analysis. What kind of applications are available then in the literature? Are available application in which the digital twin is compared to simulation. So there is this kind of generic understanding that maybe a digital twin is a simulation model, which is not correct. The main difference is the use of real-time data coming from the, from the factory directly into the digital twin, and data from the digital twin going back to the real factory. So there is this, let me say, bidirectional communication that is not usually considered in simulation models, traditional simulation models. Of course, this kind of simulation models are embedded somehow in digital twins, because they allow to carry out some analysis, such as workplace design, task planning, workload balancing, and so on. On the other side, we also have digital twins for robot monitoring and control, however, this kind of applications are very, very few in the literature. What I would like to mention is that the role of humans in the digital twin instead is not very explored, so humans are usually kept out of the loop. Therefore, I think that the Felice project, one of the most innovative aspects of the Felice project is the fact that we are trying to put together humans and robots in the digital twin, so in the loop. Just one last point regarding the need for advanced, extended reality solutions for the digital twin. In particular, we know that when we talk about digital twin, usually we, in our mind, we picture like 3D models, a sort of 3D representation, a virtual representation of the environment, which is, let me say, correct, because also the animation part is very useful for, from this point of view, to validate the system, to see what is going on, to have a synthetic view of the, of the system. And indeed, there are some preliminary works in the literature showing that virtual reality, digital twins, could really inform the safe implementation of human robot collaborative strategies in the factories of the future. And therefore, they are receiving considerable attention, and this is another topic that is going to be discussed. Some examples, for example, consider a cave system, in other cases using maybe some HMD advanced displays, such as the Microsoft Orlens, in order to manipulate the robot using mid-air optics technology, and so on. So also the connection between virtual reality and digital twin is very strong in the literature and this developing when we talk about human robot collaborative systems. So just to conclude our analysis, this is a list of emerging gaps and emerging challenges that we are facing. First of all, of course, it is needed a strong modeling effort to design and validate a digital twin of human robot collaborative assembly systems. Simulation, of course, is part of the game, but it is not only about simulation when we talk about digital twin. The services offered by the digital twin are usually separate, therefore, a unified approach is needed. The current human robot collaborative systems lacks adaptability, so it is needed a stronger connection with the environmental data, in order to, to keep the digital twin updated. The human is often out of the loop, so in the Felice project, we are planning to keep instead the humans part of the digital twin. And on the other side, despite VR and digital twin in human robotic collaboration systems are quite an important topic, yet a real prototype, a useful prototype, has not been designed, developed and validated. So this is one of our role in the, one of our objectives in the Felice project. So thank you very much for your attention, and if you have any further question on one of the topic I mentioned, I would be glad to answer.
Thank you, Antonio, for this interesting presentation. Let me ask if there are questions from the audience? Okay, again, we will try to animate a bit the discussion at the end of the presentation, therefore, I leave the floor to floor. Ah, there is a one, okay, Rina, thanks. Go ahead, you can switch on your camera.
Oh, I'll switch on my camera, okay.
Yeah, just to see each other.
Good morning, okay, thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
I just wanted, I just wanted to ask a question, since the argument is very interesting and you've all been very clear. I wanted to know if you have also in mind any special, let's say, training for the humans you intend to involve in the project, since of course, this doesn't apply to academics, but mostly in industry, it's like they either know or don't know simulation, so training them would be, would be basic, and I would like to hear some of your suggestions, since it's always useful to have, to have people telling you their experience in human training when dealing with simulation. Thank you.
So Francesco, do you want me to answer, or you go?
No, yes, you can go, you can go ahead.
Okay, so basically, yes, usually training, workers' training in one of the most relevant topics that must be discussed. Maybe I can hear my, my voice?
Maybe it's for me, Antonio, let me switch.
Oh, okay, better, sorry. So yes, in the context of the Felice project, simulation is going to be applied maybe to, as a sort of process, process simulation, where we need to test some specific strategies and related to task allocation, workload balancing, and so on, in order to increase the ergonomics and safety of the wall assembly line. So simulation in this case is not maybe directly connected to the, to the human workers, let me say, to the, to the assembly workers, who are just going to be sources of data and are going to receive instructions in order to make some assembly tasks on the, on the line. Of course, some training is extremely important when we deal with industry and when we deal with this kind of innovative tools, so definitely some, some training will be needed. But of course, one of the most, let me say, most important things of digital twins is that it should be like, let me say, a second arm, no? It should go very, very straightforward, like a friend that is there helping and supporting the, the, the factory processes, maybe even without knowing it is really there. So the concept is that we are going towards a maybe fully, full automation of the, of the products, where the assembly worker is not really knowing that is the digital twin commanding the robot, going around the assembly line and helping the, the, the worker. So we're talking about cobots, so basically, the digital twin is intended as a sort of simulation environment for an intelligent orchestrator, where the, that can basically analyze some scenarios, see which is the, the best, the best scenario to be really implemented in the, in the line, and then of course, the scenario is applied. So of course, again, some worker training is a, is an important topic, and thank you for the question. We are, we are definitely talking and discussing about, about this.
Thank you for the explanation, thank you.
Just to add something to what Antonio was mentioning, as part of the digital twin, Antonio was also presenting that there could be also the opportunity to use virtual environment, three-dimensional virtual environment, in which, okay, this is not the scope of the digital twin of the Felice project, but in general sense, virtual and immersive and interactive environment, I think, the one that uses it in the Felice digital twin, can be used also for, for training. Again, this is not what we foresee for the Felice digital twin, but in any case, a strong connection between virtual environment, belonging to digital twin, and you can use this environment even offline, fully offline, once you are in a classroom, or in a room, or in an office, to do training, or to use your headset, or your, or the Oculus, and you can immerse the operator in a virtual environment, where they can learn to do, to do something. So Rina, as you have mentioned So, Rina, as you have mentioned, there is really a strong connection between training and simulation and virtual environment from the other, from the other side. However, in, as part of the Felice project, we are mainly focusing on the use of the digital twin to provide an environment to, in some way, to control what is happening in the, in the assembly line, thanks also to the integration of an orchestrator, an artificial intelligence-based orchestrator, that it is the topic of the next presentation. And I feel it's the case indeed to, you know, to, to move to the next presentation, that will give some additional insights about what we are currently presenting.
Thank you, thank you. Excuse me if I went out of the line, I misunderstood the human involvement. Okay, thank you, thank you.
No, 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 you, you were not out of the line. I feel that your question and your comment were, were much in line as also future activities that we can, we can do and to take into consideration, because this is a research project, therefore, if I develop a virtual environment, maybe I can use it for training as well, so I feel it's really well, well-connected. Let me leave the floor to Florian, that can start the next presentation.
Thank you very much, Francesco. I've attended several presentations yesterday, and sort of pretty much all of the participants had a pre-recorded version, so also pre-recorded one, and I thought it was a bit of a web form, so something happens with my network connection, you should be able to continue. So just give me a quick moment to share my screen.
Maybe you have also to include the audio of the presentation, otherwise we cannot listen.
Oh, sorry, give me a quick moment. So Francesco, give me a quick moment, it seems there is an issue on my side, I tried to switch the speaker to the default one.
There should be a kind of actually button on Microsoft Teams to include the audio, where is?
Yeah, there is, there is. But we got a separate headset and different drivers, and therefore, it apparently doesn't quite work.
Florian, maybe you can ask to Francesco to make, to show the presentations for you.
That would be really awesome, Francesco, if you can do that, otherwise I'll just have to talk freely to it.
Okay, F2, you have uploaded the video, right?
I've uploaded the video, correct.
Okay, do you remember the, the code that you have used?
S S thirteen.
Okay, give me one second. Okay. It's special session thirteen?
Thirteen.
Okay, wait. I'm downloading your video, just give me one minutes. Okay, almost done, still few seconds. Okay, let me start. Okay. Let me share the video.
Thank you very much.
Okay, just tell me if you are able to, to listen the, the audio. Can you hear?
No, not right now.
Sorry, can I make a comment?
Yes, sure.
When you shared your screen, you must activate an option with "activate the audio".
Yes.
In teams, in Microsoft.
Where is the, it was in?
Right, right.
Here somewhere, it's settings. Ah! And poi?
Share, share your screen.
Sure.
Wait a moment, please.
Do I include the audio? Scusa, vieni di qua e lo facciamo insieme. Wait a second, because I'm trying to figure out. Include this, oh, I'm sorry, I finally found it. Okay. So sorry, I was searching for this button, okay. Now you should have more to listen.
My name is Florian Holzinger, and I'm a researcher from the University of Plazensis in Upper Austria, and a member of the Felice project, mini-developing the component called orchestrator. Hence, title of this presentation, orchestration of human-robot collaboration. The scope of this presentation can be roughly summarized. First, the challenge of the orchestration of human-robot collaboration in the context of flexible assembly manufacturing. Of course, there are many different aspects to consider, beginning from the required skills of humans and cobots, the potential improvements in ergonomics and productivity, integration, manipulation and monitoring of adaptive workflows, ultimately, used to create a beneficial interplay of these aspects. But as our time today is rather limited, I've chosen to highlight two aspects of the orchestration, namely the formalization and the optimization aspect, and will try to give a conceptual overview of our approach. Let's first talk about the formalization. Basically, knowledge can manifest in either implicit or explicit form. The implicit form of knowledge can probably be best described as an expert, an experienced worker, who has developed a deep and holistic understanding of his work, working and practicing his skills for many years. He intuitively performs the right steps, although he might not be able to formally describe the reasoning behind it. The robot, on the other hand, has no intuition whatsoever. He needs explicit and clear instructions to perform a predefined task or exhibit a certain behavior. His corresponding programming can be seen as the explicit knowledge part, formally defined rules and commands. So one key element to orchestrate humans and robots to collaboratively perform corporations in an assembly line is to define a common formal language, which is interpretable by both of them. In this specific case, I'm talking about a way to represent workflows. So how exactly can we describe such workflows? For this purpose, we're utilizing a adapted decision-model-based approach for modeling collaborative assembly and manufacturing tasks developed by a research group at our university. It's basically a meter, meter model approach consisting of actions, assets, decisions, properties and relationships. Based on this formal meter, meter model definition, one can define an arbitrary meter model for more specific use cases, defining specific actions such as move, reach, grasp, pick, and whatever you might find useful. And the lowest level in this hierarchy, the model itself, now represents a specific instance of a given meter model, so the concrete workflow which can be executed. The important message here is that we have a formal way to describe a workflow with different actions, describing something that has to be done, decisions, assets, which are basically resources or associated data and relationships. You might also see some familiarity with VPN, which is good, as usually this kind of graph representations of workflows can be easily passed and understood by humans. Now, one very important feature is the ability to implement, as in software engineering and implementing specific behavior for each action. So for each action, you might control and you might visualize some working instructions on a display for the human worker or send robot interpretable commands to perform a certain task. You might implement a light solution or provide different levels of detail. For example, a very detailed instruction for new workers, so they know exactly what to do, which could be very handy in the training period, and including the different assets and decisions. The workflow can also react to use specific inputs and you're able to monitor the progress of the action execution. But don't get me wrong, you still need to develop implementing the specific actions and a process expert creating sensible workflow. But the first step towards a disease, what you get solution, to quickly adapt to changing requirements. By creating such a workflow from given use case, you're basically translating implicit knowledge to explicit knowledge and create the ability to utilize a robot. So these workflows can also be nested, creating sub-workflows for additional structuring and reusability purposes. So the workload diminishes over time by creating new workflows composed of older and reusable workflows. Another important aspect is the ability to create, store and run multiple workflows. So it's both possible to create one big workflow for a single workstation scenario or for the scale with multiple workstations. All of these workstations are persisted in a workflow repository, which is basically a big database, a high-quality base, so a complete history of all the created workflows is available and can be accessed at Libitum. Just to mention, you might also create different variations of the same workflow to include specific use cases like the availability of certain tools and manpower. To summarize the formulation aspect with one last slide, with adapt, we have a solution for formally represent workflows as a graph of predefined actions to provide a custom implementation for different actions and to interact with the environment. Also, I want to highlight that this model is just theory, it's more than just a thought. It has already been deployed for real use cases and the necessary software for workflow creation, execution, monitoring and visualization is also available for download, if you're sent live, provided the link to the bottom of the slide. The corresponding software tool is called the Workflow Modeler, and it's basically for the use for research purposes. So now let's switch to the second part of the presentation, the optimization part. As mentioned before, we have a formal way to describe and represent workflows with adapt. Process experts can therefore create an arbitrary number of workflows for the specific use cases, which is stored in an knowledge space and might or might not utilize a robot. So now the question arises, which of the different workflows should be used for a specific case to give a better answer than just an educated guess? We need some kind of metric to rate workflows. The idea behind the rating of workflows is to include additional meter data as a prior knowledge to add different criteria which should be considered for the rating revelation. One of the most obvious metrics would be the duration, the time needed to execute a specific action. One way to approximate these durations could be to utilize the MTM, the method time measurement system. You might also predict the potential physical strain associated with a given action, lifting or moving heavy objects, probably imposing more physical stress and strain than, for example, using a power wrench. We also consider using soil data, which should be continuously collected as the system runs, such as the error rate, the real measured duration, or some individual feedback about the subjective screen of certain actions from workers. To give you more concrete example, consider following simplified workflow consisting of several gets, plays, crew and return actions. We're focused on the two highlighted actions, the get and the screw action. Let's assume that both the cobots and the worker have the necessary skills to execute the get and the screw action. And the process expert is a two different variations of this exact workflow. One word, cobot, performs the get and the screw operation. And one where the human worker performs them. The human worker takes fifteen seconds for the get action, and the cobot is slow and requires thirty seconds. But the get operation is quite exhausting, the material might be bulky or heavy, so it's exposing the worker to a lot of physical strain. And the material may be very difficult to handle, as it's bulky. The cobot, on the other hand, is very robust against physical strain. Therefore, we try to use ordinary rating, a panel, adding five penalty points to the physical strain of the human action, but zero to the cobot action. Then, see, here can be applied to each action, adding up the penalties for the whole workflow. In this example, the cobot takes twice as long to perform the two actions, fifty seconds versus twenty-five seconds, but reduced the physical strain for the worker by seven penalty points. With this approach, we can basically rate all workflows according to a predefined set of criterias. The size of the options include the cobot in the workflow execution, we can also interact with the environment, manipulate it for our advantage. For this purpose, we're performing task-level adaptation, which is basically manipulation of the workflow itself according to a predefined set of rules. Let's recall the previous example, with the heavy material. It's soon we want to place the material on a workbench or a workstation to perform further manipulation such as screwing this example. We could adapt the hate of the given workstation to the physiometry of the human worker, so increasing the hate of the debt of workstation for taller worker, and decreasing it for a smaller worker. We could also possibly reduce physical strain of this approach. For this, we can manipulate the workflow by inserting an additional action called "adaptate" between the get and place operation. Although such task-level adaptation can improve certain criteria such as ergonomics or physical strain, it could also include some drawbacks such as an increased duration of the whole workflow execution. So by combining the ability to rate different workflows and to perform task-level adaptations, we can effectively fine-tune our sample process and optimize it according to a given criteria, provide a predictive front for the potential workflows, highlight the potential trade-offs. Getting a bit more academic, we can generalize this approach from one workstation elevated to one work and a cobot, to an assignment problem, including several workstation with different potential workflows, requiring certain skills and considering only a limited set of workers and cobots. This way, we can not only optimize one single workflow without considering the big picture, but also try to create a schedule to optimally distribute the physical strain amongst all workers, for example, alternating between easy workflows and hard workflows for workers, fine-tuning the whole assembly line according to environmental restrictions and requirements such as important deadlines or developing of the such as important deadlines or developing of the workers. In case of an unforeseen event, the workflows might also be scheduled on demand. For example, when some work in itself we can send the robot to him. Or we can also change the schedule periodically, for example, every two hours. To summarize the whole topic, I've tried to embed the benefits of the FLEET approach into different phases of business analytics. So for the descriptive or diagnostic analytics phase, which is often worked in literature, we have the ability to read workflows to the best of our current knowledge, including an analysis of the workflows according to certain criteria such as potential physical strain or duration. Approaching the future with predictive analytics, we can combine workflows and create schedules for a sample line while simultaneously predicting the aforementioned criteria. So we have an approximation of the total duration and the total physical strain throughout the day for each worker. And finally, we come to the descriptive analytics phase answering the question of what can I do? As you've seen before, we can calculate the parate front of viable solutions providing different alternatives such as the fastest schedule or the schedule with the least physical strain. But the final decision, the final responsibility lies always in the hands of the person supervising and accepting the recommendations from the orchestrator, a human. And if this fun words are want to conclude this presentation, thank you very much for your attention and now back to the session chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me go back here. Okay. Thanks Florian for the presentation. Let me ask to the participants if there are questions. I would take this, okay, we have one question from Manolis, please Manolis.
Thank you Francesco. So Florian, can you please give us some details about how adapts would handle cases where things don't go as planned, like failures? For example, trying to pick up an object, the tool whatever that is dropped or some unfortunate, unfortunate things happening in the workspace or what happens when things are not as expected?
Sure, interesting question. Well, first of all, we have the ability to monitor the whole process. So when something fails, we hopefully get a feedback on varied fails and what are the influences of the failure. So it's just a singular failure in one particular workflow or is it some global mistake or global error, which requires a reset of the whole assembly line? So if the case is just a local or a temporal error, you can mitigate the error by sending a human expert there and try to continue with the workflow at our best ability. If the problem can't be fixed, you have to restart the workflow. On the other hand, you can kind of aggregate the previous failures and can kind of try to forecast the potential error rate. So if we have always same operation which fails, we can kind of send an expert there to take close look at this specific action operation. So given the ability to get feedback, we can therefore reschedule the future planning and don't have to stop the sample line for the rest of the shift.
Okay, well, I was mostly referring to like local errors, not not affecting the entire line, like for example dropping a tool as I mentioned. And the problem in this case is always that you really don't have a very clear idea always what is going wrong. I mean, you know that something didn't work, but it's knowing exactly what went wrong is something that is a very strong assumption and it's not usually what you actually have. It's like, you know, you are sort of blind in these cases. It's not always easy to know what, 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 what happened and take corrective action. Anyway, okay.
Sure, we only got information if there is an error and maybe some kind of type of error, was the communication error? Was there a delay error or something else? On a very specific level, did the worker drop something, is some resource missing etcetera? This case is, we can only consider if there is some kind of feedbacks and kind of digitalization of these aspects we want to monitor. Like we can't monitor human emotions such as a care into home or something like that. We can't monitor that because we can't digitalize it. So we are limited by our capacity of digitalization of the whole assembly line.
Okay, thanks.
Good. Additional questions?
Yes, I think the previous questions raises something very interesting, which is the sensitivity of optimal to incidents. If someone drops a tool, does it stress? Who does it stress and how much? And what then you can, ah, on diré in French. You can, you can then evaluate the risk that someone drops a tool. You can also for the other possible incidents evaluate them so that you get a mean augmentation of the stress on all on people because of incidents.
I don't know if Daniel, the question was over, is over, maybe Florian?
So sorry, you had a very tiny black at the end, but the issue was about accumulating stress with increasing error rate, did I got that right?
I guess, yeah, Daniel is writing the question in the chat.
Okay.
Ah, I would let you discuss of incidents on the work then. So basically, the influence of distress to workers, if you like, makes everyone mistakes, which accumulates and leads to further mistakes. Did you get that right? So basically measurements to measure stress and include the stress factor into further consideration of the error rate. Which is basically only possible if you have a valid way to find out the ground truth about the stress factors of the humans. If you just consider the error rate, this is my defect, so we can just determine, hey, the error rate increases because of stress. Because there are many different kinds of influences. But if you would have a way to evaluate the stress and to monitor the stress like with smart watches and wristbands, there should be surely possibility to include the factors in the models. And so that you get for the optimization, that's the motivation. Yeah, so we can also consider not all the original values, but those are some kind of distribution for an optimal setup to kind of takes a statistical measurement like the twenty five percent quartile of something like that and try to reduce the stress below the certain threshold. And the optimal setup can therefore be considered not only as a static parate front, but also different overlapping distributions. And shifting the alignment of the optimization according to different distributions, therefore fine tune into different criterias. That's also a possibility, very good at doing that. I hope this answers the questions. For data and stress evaluation. I only know of several different papers considering the stress of certain participants. Like either the usual use some kind of hard monitoring, the hardware durability or different measurements like the electrical skin resistance or sensitivity. There's a certain setup for example driving a car or answering the questionnaire. But most of these scenarios were usually in very controlled environment, so we were closely monitored often a company had different question areas about the physical or psychological well being. Yeah, there is some research, but and you can write me up, I can give you kind of an overview of it. But most of them are as mentioned before, in a controlled environment. So for CISO, quite major difficulties adapting those approaches towards a real case scenario for workers. For example, monitoring the EKG, so putting sensors on your chest to monitor your heart rate exactly is a pretty as a bit the high institution on the person well being, let's call it that way. At least I don't want any sensors on my day to day business. So sure. So I mean, the physical reasons why it could potentially fail, but on a theoretical conceptional level, yeah, there are ways to measure stress.
Okay. Good. Now, before we have seen some minutes before closing the session, I have also some question and I have a question for each of the speaker. But I'd like to ask you to give just like one sentence answer, thirty seconds, no more. So one question, what quick answer? And the first question is for Manolis. Manolis, what do you expect from the exploitation of the Felice project?
Well, I'm not coming from a, from a, from a certain institution. I'm mostly interested in new technologies and publications and I would say open source software. This is what are the main things that are, the way we usually as academics exploit our, our, our research. Yeah, so since we don't have that much time, this is more or less what I have to say on this.
It's, it's your exploitation, that's, that's normal, that's, that's very good. Thanks, Felice, second question. Do you expect some problem if the Felice solution is ready to be used in a real environment? Do you expect some problem in adopting the solution in a real environment? Felice, we cannot hear you, are you still here? Ah, yes, the microphone may be Felice. Okay, maybe Felice is not able to talk or to listen. Okay, I move to Antonio, very quick question. Which is from your point of view, the most critical part in the development of the digital twin?
Well, basically, one of the most critical aspects is the lack of data. We, we know that especially when we deal with new systems or in general production processes that are manual or like an assembly line, we have a lack of data and of course, in order to implement a digital twin, we need this kind of data. On the other side, it is also difficult to parameterize the whole, the whole system. And finally, another thing to discuss and to solve, another critical point is the communication, the communication protocol among the heterogeneous ecosystem of sensors, of models, software systems, hardware systems that are present in the, in the line and also that compose the digital twin.
Good, thanks, thanks a lot Antonio. And the last question for, for Florian is you say that for the optimization, you expect to have some historical data, but perhaps historical data could be not available. Can we use the some simulation, some digital twin? What we can do if there are no data, no, no real data available?
That's really data, additional data, what we exactly did, additional data. Does it change anything on the concept? It was just give us additional opportunity to optimize the results, to improve the results. Like even if you just have the a priori knowledge and can rate the workflows, we can present the operator or the expert supervisor with potential solutions and he can show us according to his experience. The best one, if we want to select. So if we don't have any historical data, the only historical data we have is experience of the operator, of the supervisor. But it wouldn't be ultimate for an issue, it would be sad, but it wouldn't be a mission.
Thanks, thanks Florian. So before really closing this session, I would suggest to have a kind of virtual picture with which on our camera. Ah, Felice, Felice is again back. Go Felice, do, do you listen to the question?
If you can repeat, it's better.
Okay, the question was really, really simple and was if the Felice system is ready to be used, do you expect some problem in adopting the Felice system in a real environment?
Of course, it depends. When we spoke about, talk about Felice, we talked about different type of modules and it depends on the modules and it is really important the level of the maturity of the, of the technologies. So this will be used by human and in a very complex process and it is important that it is, it has to be very ready, very made, very measured.
Okay, good. So it's ten thirty exactly, let's switch on camera everyone. I put gallery mode and you can do the same. So we can try to have a picture, just you know, to remember this, this special session. Okay, here we go, you can open and open wherever you are. Ciao Elvetia, nice to see you. And we go and we are more or less here. I'm starting taking a screenshot, if you do the same, it's better, so we have. Oh, simulation team over and over, John.
We have a bottle opener for the award ceremony.
Oh, John, it's still, it's still fifteen in California, right? You are still, what time is it over there?
It's one thirty AM.
Oh, that's really nice. So let's make some print screen and I can even shift my mask down and do smile. Okay, let's see if I have the picture, another one. Okay, got it, perfect. Thanks everyone for joining this very interesting session on the Felice project. Obviously, if you want to cooperate within the Felice project to establish new research activities, feel free to contact us. We would be really very glad to get in touch with you. There will be additional special session in upcoming conferences in November about the Felice project as well as in the next ITRIP conference that I remember will be in Rome in September two thousand and twenty two. So let's, let's keep us updated and let's stay in touch. Thanks a lot. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye everybody, bye bye.
Thank you.
My wooden calculator says it was a successful session.
Thank you.